City council meeting to order, seven o'clock Tuesday, November 27th. I'd like to welcome everybody who's taken the time to be with us this evening. I'm going to ask you first to please stand for an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. O heavenly Father, as we enter this holiday season, we thank you for bringing us together tonight, and we give you thanks for our families and friends, both near and far. We thank you for allowing us to enjoy this wonderful island. As we enter our holiday season, we ask you to please remember our service men and women who are not able to be home for the holidays. For it is in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, please call her own.
Captain in the barb, here.
Here.
Captain in the cannon, here.
Yeah.
Captain in the lock, here.
Captain in the stony, here.
Captain in the tunnel, here.
Captain in the horn, here.
President.
Mr. Secretary of State, here.
Attorney General, here.
Thank you. In your packet, you've received the minutes from the meeting, a public hearing on October 23rd, and a regular meeting on October 23rd. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion, corrections, deletions? Unheard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Citizens' comments. Diane has asked to speak to us tonight. We'll have to get a portable mic so we can move it back to you.
You like pickles.
Diane Altorek, 15 Ocean Park Court, Isle of Palms. As most of you know, I am unaccustomed to public speaking. So tonight, for my comment, I have decided to read my notes. I am here to speak against the Mike Settily signs that are obnoxiously placed on either side of the connector. I am aware that city council and the building department had nothing to do with this. Mr. Settily's la apologia across two articles in two issues of the Island Eye News is completely disingenuous. It reminds me of the old tagline of the comedian of the 70s, Flip Wilson, if any of you are old enough to remember him, who said, "When he got in trouble, the devil made me do it." That seems to be the thrust of Mr. Settily's reasoning for the signs. These signs are particularly offensive to me since we, including myself, on the planning commission two years ago, worked for months to bring our sign ordinance code up-to-date and into a workable code that would and should give our business community some sensible ability to advertise and still prevent signage gone amok. I was proud of what we accomplished. We talked to many of our business leaders during the months-long process of reviewing the code carefully. Many of us personally looked at various businesses to see what might be appropriate for their signage and felt, in the end, it was a good compromise and kept our city island from looking like Myrtle Beach South. Now, coming down to the connector, what we see makes the entrance to our beautiful city look like a trailer park. There is no doubt in my mind that if Mr. Settily cared more about the beauty of our island and less about making a memorial to himself, he would remove those signs. I am against this kind of self-serving statement and absolutely annoyed that the state would use my tax money so egregiously. If the state has so much extra money, why don't they send it to the victims of Hurricane Sandy? Now, that would be a worthy and have a lasting effect. If Mr. Settily can't even tell the state no, and no to his partner in crime, Chip Limehouse, how can we expect him to be an honorable steward for the Isle of Palms? If Mr. Settily can authorize putting them up, he can authorize taking them down. Now, let me speak directly to Mr. Settily and close by paraphrasing one of our great presidents. Mr. Settily, take down those signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie, do you want a copy? Any other citizens' comments? I'm going to make one here in preempting the rec. department. I want to make sure everybody is aware. I know, I know. I always do it.
I figure how long the attention span of our audience is.
Instead of an annual tree lighting ceremony, we're going to have an annual tree lighting festival. Catch the difference there? Festival. Three to seven o'clock, front beach, on the 8th of December. I understand Marty's arranged for great weather. The street will be cleared. We're going to have food and fun and games and Ferris wheels and all sorts of other fun things. The rec. department's been working overtime. Norma Jean has been -- those fingernails are just working to the bone.
Two bands.
Two bands?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, two bands. Well, all right. Four hours, you can't have one band, I guess. So, it'll be a great time. I hope everybody can make it. We'll have fun, and somewhere in that process, we will light a tree. So, it will be the start of our festive season. So, I hope everybody can make it, and I know I stole the thunder from the rec. department, but, you know, I had the mic first.
Okay.
All right, let me move on to report of standing committees. Ways and Means Committee met. See if I can remember what we did half an hour ago. I'm going to make a motion to approve an amount not to exceed $6,000 from the state ATAX funds, $3,000 for a full-page ad in the 2013 Spoleto program book, and $3,000 for camera-ready art. I'll make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. This will put us in the forefront of Spoleto and the program book, and hopefully we'll have the art that is commensurate with the beautiful nature of the island, particularly in the off-season. And we'll get that done and use the art for other purposes thereafter as well. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Moving on. Approval of $2,000, we approved Ways and Means approval of $2,000 for sponsorship from the state ATAX funds for the 2013 Dunlop Junior Tennis Championship to be held February 16th and 18th, 2013. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion? This is a three -- yeah, please.
Okay. Just to get on the official record, one of the things that was discussed at the Ways and Means Committee is to capture the information of people that are going to this tournament so we can use that to use the city website and emails to draw, you know, people in the event to come to Isle of Palms and stay. What we try to do is move, get heads in beds. Also, have that access to the rental agencies that work on the island in order to, you know, reach out to that customer in order to try to take advantage and share this great place we live and take advantage of that. So, you know, I think this is a good use of driving ATAX money to bring people to the island.
This particular tournament's going to have 350 participants, all juniors. Juniors usually travel with parents. Parents like to stay in fine accommodations. We offer such all over the island, so it's a natural fit, and some of these players will probably be out here playing on some of the courts we have on the island as well. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One no. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we also went on to award a contract, recommend for award, a contract to Love Chevrolet in the amount of $103,380 for five budgeted Impala patrol vehicles at the state contract price. I'll make a motion to award that contract to Love.
Second.
Motion seconded. While we had budgeted six vehicles, we're only going to award five, and one is sufficiently under-mileaged or whatever, in good condition, so we're going to hold that one and replace that hopefully next year in our budget cycle. So, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you very much. So, other than that, we concluded.
Two other items that were taken under way.
Okay.
Hurricane Sandy and the McNair firm.
Okay. First item, Linda reminds me, we had a proposal to send a team, if necessary, to support Hurricane Sandy recovery of communities in the affected area. We put together staff, put together a budget. It's approaching $60,000 if we, everything fell in line. I don't think we would need to spend anywhere near that amount of money, but that is the number that was put forward. Funds that, as we did with Katrina, would come out of our disaster recovery fund. So, I'll make a motion that we support a team, if called upon, to send forward to help recover from Sandy.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two nos. Thank you. And we were contracting with the McNair law firm for an amount, roughly $2,000, and this is having to do with an IRS audit of our bond, particularly a public safety building. So, I'll make a motion that we contract with McNair for that service.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for throwing that in there. All right, let's move on to Public Safety Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Wednesday, November 7th. We briefly discussed the status of the consultant's work on beach access, parking. Basically, the city staff has had a couple of meetings with them, and they're continuing to move forward on that. We had an update on the medical equipment loan closet from Diane Altorek, provided us a written report. She has lent out items in the past six months. There were only two things that were not able to be filled. I think she's gotten one of the things that she needed. I believe she still needs some youth-sized crutches.
I don't.
Okay, she doesn't. Okay. Don't send them in then. But thanks for volunteering to do that. That's very good service. We had an update on Consolidated Dispatch. Our city dispatchers begin using the Consolidated Dispatch CAD/Pro question-and-answer system. This is the same system that the Consolidated Dispatch uses. So, we're seeing what they're seeing, they're seeing what we're seeing. And there's a learning curve on this. That's why we got them in early, and we're making progress on that. Had a new business, and we just took care of that, talked about the Hurricane Sandy We discussed communication from sea cabins relating to July 4th parking and traffic, and that will be looked at by Public Safety as we get closer towards that time of year. Consideration contracts and excess of $10,000. We discussed the Chevy Impalas, which we just approved. And I have a motion. We also discussed the MS Challenge Walk, which is an event that is being held on the island for, I believe, the past three years, something like that.
I think that's about right.
I think it's about right. They start out Wild Dunes. It's a walk. It's one of the, from what I can see in the details they give, is probably one of the most low-impact events on the island, and also one of the most documented and planned-out events that we have on the island. So, I would like to make a motion that we request this event be added to our list of approved city events.
Second.
Motion seconded. We had this on your agenda under 10 miscellaneous.
I'm sorry.
Well, deal with it now.
Yeah, we.
Since we've made a motion and seconded. That's the point. As Marty said, it's attended by lots of participants, but you'd never know they're here. This particular, I guess, prior years, they're walking, how many miles? 50 miles or something like that?
It's totaled between 50 and 60 miles.
Over three days, one of which is on the island here, the last day, but they are virtually out of sight. They take back roads and stop the, in this case, the Citadel Beach House, and then they find their way back to Wild Dunes when all is said and done. I agree, it's a low impact and one that's very beneficial from the heart to see these people out there doing what they can do and enjoying what we have here on the island. So, I would support making this an annual event in our programs.
Just a point of clarification, if I may. You have down here under 10 consideration of the revised list, which I assume would include this. So, would it be appropriate to amend the motion to be for the revised list and not the singular MS Walk being considered?
We can do that. I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
And I would like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider, to approve the revised list of approved city-sponsored annual events.
Okay.
Which would include the MS Walk.
Yes.
Correct.
Seconded.
Second.
Seconded. All right, everybody here has a copy. Hopefully, people out there are aware of it. That's the only change. It's in the month of January in the first quarter, so it's right in the right time of the year that we can receive these guests and treat them very kindly. So, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, in conjunction with the annual events, and this is kind of piggybacking on what we talked about as far as the ATAX thing, I think we ought to ask these organizations to provide their, people that are signing up for these and capture these email addresses and users for marketing the island. And for it to be on the list, I think that would be something that we should add as far as requirements for them to, for organizations to be supported by the city.
We can ask, but they're all staying on the island anyway.
Not all.
This event.
Not all.
This event they do.
I would say for this event.
No, I'm talking about the entire list.
That's not part of what we're discussing right now.
Okay, but we, I know where you're going, and it's not a bad idea. We'll deal with it elsewhere, but fine. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the approved list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The whole list? What are you writing on item number 10 right now?
It's the list. It's the same list that we've approved before. The only thing we've changed is add the MS Walk as an approved list.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'm, thank you.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote yet.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm waiting for Jimmy to finish his.
I don't see anything. It's all right. It's fine.
We've approved the draw. The only thing that's changed is the MS Walk. Okay, Marty, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Then we went on to the highlights of the departmental reports. Captain Teeter gave the report for the fire department as chief was out of town, and he said that even though it was October, the water missions had not stopped, that they had rescued a kite boarder. Year-to-date, fire department personnel have assisted 550 individuals through EMS responses. Since October was Fire Prevention Week, they assisted many personnel in checking and installing smoke detectors. Mayor Cronin recounted that another senior tennis tournament had taken place in Wild Dunes. They had an elderly woman fell. We were there right away to provide assistance, and they're very glad that our folks are doing that. In addition, Administrator Tucker reported the fire department personnel had assisted the family of the city's videographer when he returned home from a long day of travel after a long hospital stay. And I think I speak for everyone when I say that, I'll say it, Doug, we're glad you're Fire Department Chief Buchanan gave the report. In October, dispatches responded to 3,783 calls. Of those, 2,830 for the police department, which is an increase of about 5% over the last year. There were 926 service calls in October, which was also an increase. There were 94 citations issued as a result of 371 traffic stops. Two of our officers completed training at the South Carolina Academy of Justice and are beginning their field training. Livability issued nine warnings from the 18 noise complaints they gave, and 10 warnings were issued for rollout cart violations. That's a have unless anyone has any questions.
Okay. Question to Public Safety? None heard. Let's move on to Public Works.
I got it. Public Works met on Monday, November 5th at 5:00 p.m. All members of the committee were present. The big thing for the meeting was a discussion of the vendor used for city sweeping. Quite frankly, Donnie Bitz, our Director of Public Works, has not been satisfied with the performance of the group that has the current contract right now. And we've had some good news that the old vendor, who we were pretty pleased with and thought was no longer in business, is under business under another name. And this contract will be ending early next year, and we will be looking at a new contract.
We have ended it.
We terminated it.
Okay, and basically, one of the other items was all, the entire city is 100% on recycle bins, and the response has been extremely favorable. And our numbers of recycle volume has shot up, and our trash volume continues to drop, which is good news. We're doing the right thing. One thing is, because of the other, every other week pickup, we're looking at possibility of asking the county to have once-a-week pickup for the recycle, because the volume is so great, especially in the rental properties, and we'll be able to capture more of that and keep our taxes down as far as trash collection. One thing I brought up during the meeting is Dicky Swears was very instrumental in providing support on council for us to become the really first island to be 100% on recycling, and I'd like to see the council recognize his efforts.
I have sent a personal letter to every member of county council thanking them for their support, and particularly for Dicky's efforts bringing this to closure for this island, at least as far as getting us started. I shouldn't say closure, getting us started. So, that letter's already gone.
Next meeting is Wednesday, January 9th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Public Works? Recreation Committee. I don't know.
Okay, the meeting was called on November 7th. All members of the president. The fall programs are winding down, as you can well imagine. New programs will start after the holidays, such as adult co-ed volleyball, which will start in January for the first time, a new program. As a note, the Halloween carnival was a huge success, as usual, with over 700 children and parents attending. And then I'll move right along to our next big event, which is the carnival that the mayor mentioned. Please, December 8th, 3 to 7, front beach. He mentioned some of it, but almost every restaurant on the island is going to have a booth and will be selling and introducing some of their products. Carnival rides for children, adults, photo trailer, Ferris wheel, slide, super slide, climbing wall, inflatables, face painting. The mayor will be doing the face painting personally, so.
Ah, yeah. And we'll sell tickets for who wants to paint my face.
Yeah, there you go. Live music, several service organizations will be there, the Turtle Team, the Exchange Club, the Multry Middle School Corps, so please come out and support, and let's tell all your friends. Again, it's an off-season. Oh, yeah, Santa Claus is supposed to be making an appearance, but.
Everybody's got to be good.
Everyone's got to be good, or we might be off the list, so.
We have an elf that's observing.
He's already here, huh?
Observing the festivities today here. Hope she doesn't fall.
So, please come out for that. Our next meeting will be January 9th at 4:00 p.m. in the upstairs conference room.
Okay. Any questions for rec.?
One quick one. Maybe Barbara and the rec. could have a dunk pool for the mayor on that.
Could I? January, or December, right?
Be careful what you wish for.
We did that.
I retract that. Not a motion.
We did that one time when we had the anniversary at the arena. It wouldn't heat the water for me. It was cold.
And actually, all council members participated.
Yes. I retract that.
The kids love it, though. All right, Personnel Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personnel Committee met on Monday, November 5th. Attending the meeting were Council members Patelli, Stone, Thomas, Administrator Tucker, Assistant Jubin, and Clerk Copeland. The press was publicly, was duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The minutes of the October 9th meeting were unanimously approved. Your member of the meeting was spent reviewing and discussing the revised Personnel Manual. And there's a lot to be said about that in a lot of words, so I'd like to ask Emily to come forward and give us an overview and answer any questions you might have, because it's a lot of detail.
Very comprehensive. Thank you. What you have in your packets tonight is a clean copy that represents several drafts, and we have been talking about it a lot in the Personnel Committee, but just for the balance of the council and for the record, I'll walk you through what we did and what you might be looking for tonight. This action was triggered, as a matter of course, just because, as part of our annual safety audit for the city, they advise us to make sure that our Personnel Manual is reviewed and updated every five years. And so, we had reached the time where it had been five years, maybe just a touch longer, and we needed to review the Personnel Manual to make sure that it was the most up-to-date. And so, how we started that process, I took the currently adopted manual, which each employee gets when they're hired, and exists in Clerk Copeland's office, and compared it against the municipal association's most currently recommended model. And I did a page-by-page, line-by-line comparison where I meshed the two books together, our existing manual and the MASCE's recommendation, and I had to make a decision about what to keep. And whenever the current manual contained an action that was specific to our city or our council, I maintained that language. So, that's where you're looking and you're seeing in parentheses, adopted by council on X date. That means that the elected body took a specific action related to a policy, and so we maintained that. But in other cases where language was just more current in the municipal association model and it was not specific to our city, I took the most current language. The next thing we did is distribute that draft to city staff. So, Linda reviewed it, Debbie reviewed it, Marie reviewed it, anyone that has anything to do with human resources in all the department has reviewed it, and we got together and had a meeting to discuss if there was anything at issue or anything that seemed out of line with current practice, anything that was contained in the manual that we no longer do, anything that we do that needed to be included. There were a few minor things. Those were addressed and added into the next draft. That draft was then sent to the city's employment attorneys, the labor attorneys, who reviewed it from a legal standpoint. And then they sent it back to us with recommendations for changes, which is resulting in the clean copy that you have here. The changes that they recommended are mostly to keep us in current with federal law, state law, anything that's been adopted or changed since the last time that we reviewed our Personnel Manual. So, for example, there were three policies that we had in place that they recommended just striking altogether and dropping in wholesale more current language. Specifically, that's the family medical, FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act language. There was just more current language related to law changes. So, we just took the lawyers' recommendations for the most updated language and put that in our new manual. The policy related to drug testing, and that happens in the city specifically for CDL drivers. And then the computer use policy was another one where they just recommended complete change. Other changes the lawyers recommended were small and related to the wording level, and so we went through, and when we agreed with them, we took those changes. The Personnel Committee worked with us every step of the way on that, and then finally, they looked at the. they looked at the draft that you have there. And you can see from the minutes that they also made three small, but policy-related changes to the final draft that's in front of you. First, they struck the restriction against employees making purchases on city computers for personal use. The committee's mind, and anyone on the committee can speak to this, of course, maybe perhaps better than I can, but that very occasionally, it is beneficial for city employees to be able to conduct a very small and appropriate amount of personal business on a city machine. So for example, if the workday has ended and you wanted to use your personal credit card to put lunch money and your child's, you know, school lunch bill, the city wouldn't necessarily object to that, or if you had a travel amendment to make, or a tax bill to pay, in a small, appropriate way, that would save city employees from having to leave work and drive somewhere else to do that, especially if they were in a jam, or a squeeze, or a deadline. So the committee recommended striking that policy that had been in place before. And then also struck council approval necessary for decisions about inclement weather and special compensation. The administrator would have to report on those things, of course, but not receive council approval before making those calls. And the committee's mind there was that those would be time-sensitive, and that the administrator needed the ability to, you know, make those judgment calls in a quick moment, maybe before she could get council approval. Maybe I'll pause for a second there, that was a lot. So that's the process we went to get to this clean copy. The changes that the lawyer made from an employment review standpoint, and then also three small changes that came from the Personnel Committee to this clean copy. And the goal here tonight, we're hoping for a recommendation for approval of the clean copy that is here. Other than those three small things, there has been no policy change at all between what the city's currently existing manual does to dictate employee behavior on the job, and what this manual does. It's really just a Scribner's review and a legal review of this manual. And there is nothing that says that if we find any error or want to change anything else, that we can't, you know, make another policy adoption. It's a common enough practice that if we adopt this manual, and then three months later make a decision about wanting to change or add or alter some policy, we can certainly take a singular action at that point and add in a new page or something like that. I know.
Take a breath.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions, anyone? Can I help?
You want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this provision to the police manual.
Motion is seconded, so we're approving that adopted under 27, 2012 City Employee Handbook. Okay, any discussion on this? Quite comprehensive work effort. I want to thank the committee and of course, all of staff who've put all their time and effort into it. Obviously, working off a prior one makes it a lot easier, but it's quite a comprehensive document.
Lot of work. Were your eyes seeing double?
Yeah, quadruple, actually. Yeah.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, Doug.
Okay, we got the Personnel Manual out of the way. The next one is the Floating Holiday, and that's not anything really elaborate there, but the committee unanimously approved December 24th, 2012, to be the Floating Holiday.
2013.
Pardon?
It's 2013.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right. Okay, 2013, Floating Holiday.
So we have a motion to approve the holiday schedule that you've seen in your package. Motion, seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. So don't look for anybody around here on Tuesday, December 24th, 2013.
Okay, our next meeting is January 8th, 2013, I got that one right, 13.
Sweep State Players.
Well, no, I haven't got that yet.
I'm sorry.
October Sweep State. Recreation, Christine Wilson. Police Department, Carolina Voight. Public Works, Tim Tapley. And Fire Department, Stephen Goodwin.
Very good. Any questions for Personnel? All right, moving on. Real Property, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real Property met November 12th, all members were present. Under citizen comments, Tom Gier made a request to open up Ocean Avenue for public parking and requested that his written comments be entered into the public record. Tom felt that all streets on Island Pond should be treated equally, and by allowing parking on Ocean, it would take the pressure off visiting parking in more highly populated neighborhoods. Under Old Business, the RFP for the city parking lots has gone out, and bids are scheduled to be opened tomorrow, Wednesday the 28th. And hopefully, we'll have an acceptable bid, and the contract will start March 1st next year. One part of the discussion was opening the lots up to 8 o'clock instead of this current 6 o'clock time, and the city decided not to make the change at this time. Next on Old Business was Wayfair Signs. Rich Day from Stand Tech was president and updated the committee on the project, and what Stand Tech will be making an application in South Carolina DOT in coming weeks on behalf of the city. One thing was discussed was the Mike Satilli signs at the intersection. Everyone was pleased to see Mike recognized for his service. However, the committee felt that the signs were too large for the intersection, and really contrary to the direction the city was moving on as far as signage with the wayfinding project. So this will be looked on, looked into, along with the South Carolina Department of Transportation during the project. We also discussed parking on Ocean Avenue, and Stand Tech is also looking at island-wide parking, and Ocean Avenue is part of that study, which they will be working on and giving feedback back to council. We discussed beach restoration. Basically, the city has one more action allowed under the current permit. The permits that we have, the federal permit expires in 2017, and the state in 2016. So we are looking to take action, to coordinate both permits, so they would both be, fall under the federal deadline of 2017. Additional work since the committee has been, basically, we want to have the two dates coincide. We'll also want to see if it's possible by the state to allow us to have an additional shoal scraping. Right now, we can have one event, and we'd like to possibly have the option for a second one. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to council that we approve 5,000, up to $5,000 for a contract for CSC, to work on, work permitting process, to make an adjustment to our current permit, and also coordinating the schedules for the next action.
Motion is seconded. I believe Linda was flagging in your schedule, when we were at Ways and Means, you've got a schedule on the funds remaining unallocated as part of the beach restoration, and that would be the source of the funds from which this 5,000, up to $5,000 would be drawn. I can't remember the number, 600,000 or something like that, so.
That's correct.
But this is a very worthwhile endeavor, if we can pull it off and get the permits lined up, and get more shoal scraping events permitted. Doesn't mean we're going to do them, but we'll at least have the opportunity to consider it.
I'd like Linda to give a little bit more data for committee.
Sure.
For council.
The mayor's correct. Within the existing beach restoration budget, there is roughly $600,000 remaining, and two of the line items, the general contingency line item, has got $16,000 remaining in it. And then even under the shoal management endeavor for the focused erosion project, has a balance remaining too, so of 120,000. So either of those places could accommodate this additional $5,000. The reason there's the need for the additional work is, we thought we could just perhaps have a discussion with the permitting agencies and submit just one written request and get the modification done, but they are going to require that we submit data to them for their consideration, and that is going to require some time to collect the data on the part of coastal science and engineering. They will have to submit drawings, and then, you know, if they agree to those, then they will be considered for approval, and then would have to go out on public comment again, very similar to the comment period when you start from scratch. So that is what gets us to the $5,000. In terms of what we're hoping to accomplish with this, you all have a schedule that looks like this in your packets, or at least Real Property did, if it didn't get included. But right now, within this five-year window, the permit would allow for us to only do one more shoal scraping. So this gets a little tricky when evaluating the erosion in the target area, because if we move too quickly, we could use up our opportunity, and then before the five years end, still have another erosion event and be in trouble. So what we're hoping to gain by this modification is a little more time on the permit, which would give us one more window for shoal scraping, and the ability to do two more scraping events if it's necessary, not just one more scraping event. So what we gain with this is more flexibility to be responsive to the need. We're not asking to be able to move any greater volume of sand. The total volume that we're allowed to move is 500,000 cubic yards, and that's split into a maximum of 250,000 cubic yards per shoal scraping event. We would still have the total maximum of 500,000 cubic yards, but we would have a little more flexibility as to when we used the cubic yardage. And as you all know, we've had some significant weather as a result of the most recent high tides and wind, and onshore winds, and so we're beginning to look now at when the most appropriate time would be to act a second time. And, you know, so we may only be able to move a small volume of sand in the near term, but then still need to move some more sand before the end of the five-year period. So we're just trying to give ourselves a little more flexibility to be able to be responsive to the problem.
Look ahead and not behind.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments?
Question. I'm sorry. The sand that's brought in, that does not count towards this at all.
Correct.
Okay, just clarify.
Different permit.
That's a very private permit for maintenance and what they've got.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you.
Okay, all Marina rents are current, and the next meeting is set for January 10th at 5:00 PM.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for Real Property? None heard. Let's move on. You have received the minutes from the Accommodation Tax, Order Zoning Affairs, and Plan and Commission. Any issues? Whoops.
[inaudible].
Well, Plan and Commission didn't have it, yes, I'm sorry. All right, moving on, nothing on the petitions. We'll go on to item eight, bills already in the possession of council. Make a motion for second reading of Ordinance 2012-09, an ordinance amendment titled seven, the Licensing Regulations, Chapter 71, Business Licenses, Article 8, General Provisions of the City of Island Pond's Code of Ordinances, to change provisions for insurance companies to conform with state law. I'll make that as a motion and waive reading.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion on this? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Okay. We have no new bills or resolutions. We're up to our miscellaneous business, which we will deal with here briefly. We're in consideration of hiring of the Thurman, Kirchner, Tibbs, and, yep, I can't even pronounce it, Yelverton? Did I say it right?
Yelverton.
Yelverton. Oh, all right.
He's not here, so.
He's not here, so he's not offending anyone. Is he going to watch? I'll do it again if he's going to have to do some other thing. Law firm, this is a firm we'd like to bring up. I'll ask the administrator to tell us.
Okay, we are going to have a discussion in executive session that will relate to the reasons why we need to discuss this possibility. As you see down there, we have a potential legal claim arising out of a contract. And so, when we go into executive session to discuss this issue, I would like to request that council ask Jesse Kirchner to stay, so that we can discuss it in his presence, and then after the executive session, if you all wish to come out of executive session to take an action related to this agenda item, then we can do so.
Okay, very good. So we're going to move on, we just, well, our next meeting date, I'm reading, the 6th on February, 6:00 PM on February, I mean, December, December 4th. I hope everybody can be present, it'll be a short meeting.
Is it a short meeting?
Hmm? Oh, okay, I saw that. I'd like a motion to go on executive session, as the administrator said, to receive legal advice on a potential legal claim.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you. We're in executive session.
The two chiefs stay as well.
Yes. We're going to ask the chiefs to stay, since they're deeply involved with this. Come on up. I just sat at the table. Do we have the mic down at the table? Okay, are we on? We're good? All right, we're out of executive session, we took no action, we heard advice from council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we hire Thurman, Kirchner, Tibbs, and Yelverton, PA, to relating to a potential legal claim arising out of contractual matters.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion on this? Hopefully, this is short, less than a few years, but hopefully, we'll get through it and have what we need at the end. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Welcome to the team. Okay. No other items to be prop for council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here. See you on December 4th.
See you Friday night.
Or Friday night.
Friday night.
With bells on.
I forgot that.
Yeah.
Bells on your shoes.
You're going to bring your little off?
Yeah, I've got another one.